Hello, everyone. We get ready to get started and call this meeting to order. It's our regular meeting. It's Monday, November the 10th at 6:00 P. M. At this time, I'd like to welcome everybody here, and we will continue with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Let us all stand. We ask our administrator, Mr. Tim O'Brien, to lead us in our invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together. In this time of short days and long nights, when the darkness is with us, is the same time that we celebrate Thanksgiving and the blessings that we have been given. In my personal life, I had a loss this last week. I'm not alone in that. All of us lose people. But let that focus us on the light of those that we've lost and the light that surrounds us and those that we live with and work with and those that we love and those that we should love. Because, Lord, it is our mission to love each other as you love us. Let this season of joy and Thanksgiving remember all of those that we've lost, but mostly, let us remember those around us, those who we can impact, those that we can share with and offer a helping hand to or receive one from. Lord, we ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. For my comments, I would like to draw attention to our Veterans Day that's coming up tomorrow. Let's please all remember all the ones who made the sacrifice, not the ultimate sacrifice, but to serve our country. Even those who have gone on, and we want to really thank them for their service. Because of their service, we're able to have meetings such as this. And we can use these times to reflect and remember how God has given us this opportunity to live in a free nation that was really on the backs of those who fought for our freedom. So we never want to forget that. Thank you so much. Let's have a moment of silence in reverence. Amen. Thank you. And also, on a lighter note, we have for eighteen times state champions, Pickens High School volleyball team. They won this past week, and we want to congratulate them, and hopefully, we can do it on a more tangible, tangible note. But let's remember them, because I remember when they won the first one when I was in high school. So y'all know that was a little while back, but they have eighteen state championships with that program. And we just want to thank them so much for their dedication to that sport. With that, that ends my comments. I'd like to go further if we have any comments from citizens. Okay? No comments from citizens. Administrators report.
Okay. I have a brief report this evening. First of all, please be reminded that 6:00 P. M. tomorrow, we have been invited to tour the Atkins Plant on Lake Kiwi. So just make sure you noted that. Another thing, I had several questions from council members. We've had meetings and discussions with the South Carolina Department of Transportation about various improvements in road diets and repainting, restriping of our state highways through the city of Pickens. They had scheduled a public hearing to display and see comment on those items for November 13th. I got an email this afternoon at just before 4:00. They didn't send out the postcards or the invitations or do the notifications. So, that being the case, they are working with the Haygood Center, which is where it was to be, and they are working on doing all those notifications, sending out the postcards with the idea of moving it to next month. We don't have a definitive date, but hopefully, all of the community will be involved with that, and we'll get the definitive timing out of it as soon as we get word back from DOT.
And that was for Main Street project, correct?
There's a number of, it's 178. It's Main Street, yes.
Does that complete your report?
It does.
Okay. Are there any questions for our administrator at this time? Now, we're going to number six, approval of meetings minutes. October the 7th, 2025, regular meeting. October the 21st, 2025, special call meeting. And October the 22nd, 2025, special call work session. Need a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the October 7th regular meeting, the October 21st special called meeting, and the October 22nd special called work session.
I second it since John hasn't read it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are you ready for question?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Please be put on the record.
Well, let me just, I just, as it concerns these minutes, I wanted to know why it was that Councilman Rogers' name was mentioned in them, because I know he didn't attend any of these meetings. What, were you there? Okay, I retract that. I'm sorry.
We're gonna miss that. Thank you so much. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous.
That's this hand, John?
I, thank you.
Not, then the point with the minutes of the meetings, we have in just one meeting, which we're required by state law to have this month. And we'll be having one meeting in December. That's the second Monday in December. That's to swear in our newly elected council. That being said, that we'll move forward in January, and in January, we will be renewing the contract of administrator of our city clerk, our council clerk, and of our attorney. That'll be done in January. So I said, all that needs to be done with our new council. So if it's okay with council, is one meeting in December adequate?
Thanks. Yes.
Okay. We don't have to vote on it. Just get a poll. Is that all right? Okay. So December, we'll have one meeting, and in January, we will start new business with our new council. Okay? Thank you so much. Approval of resolution number 2025-R3, adopting written beneficiary and or tenant selection procedures for participation in South Carolina Housing Trust Fund programs. Can we talk about that, too?
We can. Well, last month, we had a very productive conversation with the South Carolina Housing Trust, as you'll recall. And essentially, this group has funds set aside, a large part of them are generated through document stamps when properties are sold that go to these purposes to try to help with housing in the state of South Carolina for those in need of assistance, including communities like our own. They have several hundred million dollars available to incentivize projects like these. And essentially, we met with them, and then I completed their fairly extensive application procedures, which are under review now. And as part of that, we needed to pass a resolution similar to this just outlining the basics of how we would operate a housing program in partnership with them.
Okay. How was this initiated to start this process?
Well, originally, we were at a South Carolina, it was the Development Group down in Hilton Head, and we actually were sitting at a table discussing housing issues when the executive director and the chairman of this group sat down next to us and began engaging. This was more than a year ago. This organization has typically worked with small nonprofits and not government entities. But they brought to our attention that they were going to begin, they preferred working with local municipal governments because we kind of have the oomph for, you know, the procedures and policies in place. We've handled grants before, and they've had mixed results with the more grassroots organizations, which isn't to exclude those, but to encourage partnerships. And then Councilman Wilson kind of championed this process and kept an open dialogue with these folks. And then we were able to bring them in last month. Their statewide chairman is a resident of Pickens County, so he had a lot of interest in Pickens benefiting. I just heard a story that related on NPR, South Carolina Public Radio. They're building 130 homes, and they have approved five or six home builders. And right now, they've got eight counties that are programmed kind of from the low country to the upstate. And that is part of the program that this would enable us to become involved in.
That is really commendable. I want to thank all the ones that were at that meeting. I didn't make it. But it shows how important it is to be able to network throughout the state to bring that kind of information back to your local municipality. I really commend you all. Floyd, you were a part, I'm sorry, Councilman Rogers, you were a part of it.
Yeah.
Councilman Rivers and Councilman Wilson, they brought that back to Pickens that we can start now getting some more opportunities to have affordable housing within our city limits that has nothing to do with annexation. It's just an opportunity that our ball lots that are in the city that people own, that they can start these low-interest loans. So it's really, really helping another demographic of people.
And to characterize this properly, this is not low-income housing. It is attainable housing that would actually be purchased by families who meet certain, which we've established here, income parameters. But it's some portion of the, for different programs, it's different, but eighty percent of the AMI for the area, which would not be the same as like subsidized housing. It's more of an effort to keep people homeownership.
That's awesome. That is awesome.
Plus, it also covers repairs.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not just homeownership.
That's another, another program that they also.
Good point. That's great.
Yeah, that's probably where most people are going to benefit from that.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask, if the councilman will just give me a second.
I was talking first.
Well, I know, but you were rambling, and I had a question. So so the application that Tim did, is that to cover both new housing and repair projects?
Yes, they have, as part of their presentation, you'll recall, they are rolling everything into one application process. So yes, if we're in, we're in, and all of the various programs that they described would be available to us as we move forward.
When will we find out if we're in?
That's a very good question.
That was my question.
I think that that's going to be part of it, and we should have that audit, you know, the January, February timeframe. But it certainly didn't hurt to get it in front of them. They do have our 2023 audit. But in order to be caught up, caught up, we need to have the 24 done.
And that, and that means there's a lot of communities in South Carolina that are not eligible, if that's a criteria. Because there are many that don't have their audits done.
Sixty to seventy that are well more than in arrears than we are. Several or ten years.
Not to be proud of that, but just, you know, it's a, it seems to be a challenge.
Yes.
Those are the counties that could use, or the cities that could use the money the most.
Exactly.
Okay. With that being said, I need a motion to approve such resolution as Resolution 2025-R3.
If it's okay, I'd like for Ray to make this motion.
Is it okay?
You may second it.
I make a motion to approve the resolution number 2025-R3, adopting written beneficiary and or tenant selection procedures for the participation in South Carolina Housing Trust Fund.
Good job. I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Now we're ready for question. Are there any questions?
I'm still interested in us using the property we can, that we attain. I'm not sure if this is what council wishes, but I would really like this.
That would be good to bring it up to, yeah.
Right.
So we could really use that to benefit the citizens.
Yeah, we could maybe build six affordable houses on that property, maybe eight. You know, that'd be very beneficial, and it's, I think it would be quality houses, you know what I mean? The way that we talked about before.
All upon a development.
Yeah, we could all come up, we could all, as a city, join in and come out per month or two or less, whatever, and we could get a contractor, and we could build those homes. I'm not sure how this would all play out with them, and we could work, do that.
That would be very beneficial to the community.
I think it would be awesome. I'm still, I hope council's interested in that.
I'm interested. Anybody else have any comments or questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Further discussion as relates to the loss of revenue with new meter changes. We had a discussion about this, and Trey Adams brought us up to date with what we're dealing with as far as the meters that we have been dealing with, a problem to where they're not reading right. And then it was also error by employees of not reading some meters. So with that being said, do you have any other input?
Just to recap the prior conversation, that year over year, and it's difficult to capture what is related to what, but year over year, the trend is behind $300,000. Now, does that mean that people were not billed $300,000? I think it's too early to tell that. We know that there were, because we went with minimum bills to make sure our customers were not impacted. And also, through this process, we found that some of the older meters, and especially for some commercial larger users, were not properly recording their usage, and they've been charged the minimum for some time. So as we've discussed this many times, there are issues with the new meters, there are issues with the old meters, there are lots of issues go around. So we don't know, if the year ended today, we feel like we would be $300,000 behind trend. Now, ferreting out exactly what of that is related directly or could be usage, that's another story. So the question that we were left with, that council was wrestling with, was do you try to go back and collect some of that? We also discussed the fact that as the meters have been improved and as the new equipment has been properly calibrated, and now employees are committed to reading them, as they're supposed to, that we feel like the trend is going to be upward. So by the end of the year, what is a loss and what is not? Also, to keep in mind that part of the reason we feel like at this point, in hindsight, that we ran into these issues is we set out to save substantial funds somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $300,000 by doing this as a do-it-yourself project within the city. I think we've all determined in our conversations and direction from council has been, that may have been a penny wise and a pound foolish, and that in the future, as we move into additional tranches of this replacement, that we are going to pay those fees. So another question that comes up is, had we paid the fees, we might not have had the bumps, but the economics of it would be the same. So we would have just written a check to the installer instead of not charging people who were trying to shelter from some questions that we had. So it's a complex question and one that staff and I stand ready to carry out, whatever the wishes of council are. But it remains to be seen what those wishes are, so.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we can open up the floor for discussion on which avenue and which way that you would like to go as a council in moving forward. Yes, sir, council?
Can we, can we ask Trey to give us an update from this last week, if anything else is, is, I mean, I'd really like to hear from the department heads, too. You know what I mean? Is anything new with the that you found and come up with, or any more solutions or anything that's come up over this last week?
So we have got the numbers lower as far as re-reads of meters that weren't picked up. The meters are working correctly. It's just been some issues about some lids and the readings not going through the lids, like the signal not getting out through the lid. We've constantly been working on those issues. Also, the issue of human error, and some numbers were put in incorrect at no fault of any one person. It just, you know, things like this happen during a meter changeout. We have found some of those incorrected. We actually read 1 through 6 today, which is the routes that we've changed the meters in, and the reread list is the lowest it has been today since we've put them in. So it is continuously, the re-reads that we're having to go out and do are continuously getting lower. And, you know, things are going the way that they need to be going, but it just going to take some time to work through the issues at each separate meter. But like I said, they're getting much better today. When we printed the reread list, they were lower than they have been since we've installed them. So we do know we're going in the right direction, and I, myself, and a few other people are still actively working on it daily. I devote as much of my time as I can to it. We have, like I said, got them lower and lower, and we think that, I predict, within the next three months, we should be reading them perfect. It just takes us some time to work through each meter individually.
So you would say don't install anymore until probably about?
Yeah, so we haven't installed anymore since we started having the problems. We will finish working through the problems that we have before we install anymore. But, so we're not going to do any new meters outside of routes 1 through 8. So we read 1 through 8 this time, and then two weeks later, we read 9 through 16. So we have the registers in the shop for, to finish 1 through 8 or be dangerously close to finishing 1 through 8. We haven't changed anymore out unless we find an old meter in route 7 or 8 that isn't, you know, it won't data log. We can't get a radio signal from one of the old ones. Then we go ahead and put a new one in there. So we can data log, and, you know, we can actually prove the usage to someone and get records on that meter. But as far, like when we started, we were changing anywhere from 50 to 100 a day. We have completely halted those operations while, you know, we've devoted all our time to troubleshooting the ones that are already in the ground.
And, Mr. Mayor, if you'll recall, our last discussion along these lines, we had $334,000 left in the line to purchase additional meters. We suspended that just administratively, and that was part of the calculation that if we're, you know, the first thing to do when you're in a hole is stop digging, was if we're behind at the moment, and we think this will get smaller, but at the moment, we see us behind $300,000 on the trend, if we have $334,000 in the budget to spend on continuing this process, then we suspend that until the next year to kind of even that financial hit up.
So is there been any more investigation on meters that just haven't been working? You know, I think you were going to look into more business like McDonald's, I believe, in the school system and.
Yeah, so we have found some of those. I haven't found any additional ones from the ones that we had already found. It's about half and half. Some of them were covered under warranty due to their age and not being over 10 years old. Some of them were older than 10 years, and they're not covered under warranty. I have ordered three meters prior to us, you know, putting a halt on ordering meters. Got those in last week, so I'm currently making plans to get those meters installed in the ground. Three of them that we found problems with are already installed in the ground. We have four more at the shop to install. And I have put a halt, already talked to the distributor a few weeks back. We're not ordering any more meters right now until, like I said, we get all the problems fixed and.
Trey, just for council's edification, since you have pallets of meters that we just talked about, please explain why you had to order meters in these particular cases.
Okay, so these are big commercial meters, so they're anywhere from 2-inch to 6-inch meters. So they are one solid body. They're not a base and a register like the 3/4 by 5/8 meters we're changing out. So these, once they quit working, there is no register to change out. You replace the whole entire meter. So those are, that's the reason I had to order those, because there's not a pop-off register changeout for those. They're a solid stainless steel body, and when it dies, you get rid of it and order a new, you know, as a whole.
So is anyone actively going around to the businesses that have those kind of old meters on it and making sure that those meters still work?
We already have.
Okay, so all businesses have been covered, schools and all the rest?
Yep.
Okay.
Like I said, we still have four that we have to change out that, you know, I have got. But as far as taking an inventory of what's in the ground and is it working, we have already completed that.
Mr. Mayor, let me just ask, and I'm a, Trey, I don't know if this concerns you directly, but the question is, so should we pay someone else to complete the project when the time comes to complete the project? And it sounds like a lot of these problems don't matter who's installing them. If the lid doesn't let the radio signal go through, what has that got to do with the installer?
There are methods to mitigate that and tested at the time. If you have a meter that is three feet deep in the hole with a lid on it, the, these installers would likely come in and say you need to put a jumper on it that goes through the top of the lid. There's just a different configuration, which makes it more readable. And keep in mind that as we walk through these meter issues, that that's an efficiency question of the radio read of the meters. It doesn't impact the billing or the consumption. It's just that we want to be able to read 95, 96% for maximum efficiency. But it doesn't complicate other than during a perfect storm, when you're behind on reads and re-reads, and you've got issues that you're trying to settle. But I guess the best, most direct answer to your question is people that do this and deal with these radio frequency issues, the vendors have workarounds for, it's wet in there. And typically, what that means is they would pull the whole box, and they would replace it with a waterproof box and mount the register where it has the most likelihood of reaching the signal out or extend it through a button antenna that would be on top of the top. Basically, through the process that we were doing, we got the registers in, and we put them on the meter, wherever it was, and didn't really take some of that into account.
So how does that, so you just pay the, you pay the installing company a flat fee per installation? It doesn't matter what they have to do to get it to work right? They just, it's covered by that, or is it just?
If they have to change a box out, they're going to let us know this box needs to be changed, and then we would have to change the box. But if they're going to install a register with a wired unit on it, they would just install that wired unit. Because that really isn't much different than installing the unit that's all under the glass.
There's no additional cost for that?
No, they, I mean, they have, when they, you know, give you a quote, they'll have some percentages for things that some percentages for things that they didn't foresee to happen but did. But as far as like having to change a box or something like that, that would be our responsibility to change those boxes.
And the, the main thing on this is that we have a, a small staff, very hardworking people that deal with everything from breaks to ongoing maintenance and this is not to say that given all the time in the world to just do this, that it wouldn't have worked out better, but what we've learned is that trying to balance everything that's going on and get trained properly to do this and carried out with all of the variables, that maybe we're learning on the go, that there's a curve there that it ended up biting us. It was probably better to have a vendor be responsible and when they turn over the keys, they're on the hook instead of us being on hook as we try to work through any issues that come up.
Well, I don't remember there being, I mean, it sounded like when we, this first came up, that it was pretty simple, switch out kinda thing, and I don't think anybody anticipated the kinda problems. I mean, if we did, right, we would've definitely looked at it differently.
There are known knowns and known unknowns and then there's this unknown unknown. We've now lived through it. We found out what the complexities were and what the, the level of workload that it added, even if, even when it goes wet. So, I think that's part of the calculation, you know. I'm, was perfectly capable of, of doing the, the renovations on my home, but I chose not to because I've done it before.
But Councilman Rogers will be glad to come and help you in your, in your renovation. In fact, he'll even change out meters if we need him to.
I have one, one, one further question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, in our last discussion, I asked, are we able to go backwards, you know, and come up with an approximate, you mean, of usage or, or definite usage, you know what I mean, on the meters that we've been just, we have been charging a flat fee and so that we could recoup at least part of this three hundred thousand dollars in a time where we're not, this, as a city, we could use the finances? You know, you were saying we could, we can go back?
On those meters that we had, the new meters that we installed, we can go back and pull what's called a data log on them and see every drop of water that's been through it since it's been installed. But on another note, there also with the revenue from water meters, this is the time of year that it's always the lowest because people aren't washing cars, people aren't irrigating their lawn, they're not filling pools and stuff like that, so.
Right. But the flat fee's been being charged for six months?
No, sir, two months. We build a minimum for two months.
That was in the summer though, right?
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
August and September.
That's when we, so, back then, they would probably be watering the lawn or washing their cars or whatever.
Yeah, and, and we, like I said, we could go back and, and get a data log and see the usage. The, the workload that that would put on to, to do a data log for that many meters, it's about nineteen hundred meters and if you really get after it as hard as you can go, you can do about twenty-five to thirty data logs a day. So, it would take us a ton of time to get all that information.
For three hundred thousand dollars is where?
If, if that's what council wanted us to do, we'll make it happen.
I mean, or even harsher, you know, Cameron and I were talking about this today, you know, if someone delivered gasoline to his business, you know what I mean, and gave him an, an extra ten thousand gallons and they wouldn't write it off and say, oh, it was our bad when they found out that they did in fact deliver that gasoline, you know, and I thought, he, he gave me that analogy and like, that, that's very good. And none of us would expect that, but, you know, I know as a city, we can, we can talk to, to the folks and maybe negotiate this, you know what I mean, and, and, and come up with maybe some percentage, you know what I mean, that, that I don't think the city should just write this off as a loss. I think we're, we're responsible for that.
The large body meters, the older six inch and two and four for the commercial, those have, those are the older models, they're not the new meters that are being installed, and they have been dead for, for some time. So, there's no reconstructing what their usage is. The only option there would be to, to go forward ninety days, get an average and then perhaps present that as a, a point of discussion.
Which would be worth, I mean, that would be some, maybe you could, you know what I mean, have meetings with?
It's up to council if that's the direction.
I mean, I don't know what council thinks, but I, I think Cameron and I thought that would be a very good idea to at least try to recoup some of this. I, and I don't wanna put a huge burden on public works, but I, I, I do think that, you know what I mean, we're, this is the city's money and we're supposed to manage it well, you know what I mean, and so, it wasn't anyone's fault, but we could try to recoup some of it, you know?
Mr. Mayor, I have a, let me, I have a couple more questions. So, I'm just curious, the master meter for our water system, right, that comes from Gringle Water, who owns that meter?
Who owns the?
Yeah, who owns the master meter?
Where we buy our water?
Yeah.
Gringle Water.
Gringle Water owns it. And do they test it for accuracy and things?
Yes.
They do?
Their billing?
Frequently?
Yearly.
Yearly? Okay. Just curious. Then, then let me ask, we talked about the, the three hundred thousand, you say that's on the trend line, but what is the actual cost? Where, where are we right now?
I'm sorry, the actual? Yeah, you said the trend was?
You said the trend was three hundred thousand. I assume that if something changed for the good, we wouldn't hit three hundred thousand in actual cost or losses, we would actually be short of that or more of that. I don't know which.
Well, and that's the, may not be here this evening, but that's exactly all we're talking about is all we can measure at this point is the trend. We know that year to date, we had collected in total, X amount and that year to date this year, we have collected three hundred thousand dollars less than that amount. So, so that does not quantify, that's what I was trying to, to make clear. That does not granularize the, well, we, that's a loss. That is a difference in trend and it's gonna take a lot of digging to figure out what is what.
You don't know if you've used more water or less water, you're just knowing that's how much fuel has been coming into the system.
Plus, you know, some of the, the, the reaction that you've seen from, from customers is because we have made extra special efforts to make sure that our customers were not impacted by this, other than the surprise of a first bill where we didn't, you know, recognize we had problems and we went to the minimum. But some people are still reacting to, I haven't used any water and all of a sudden now it's showing I'm using water and, and what happened? Well, you got a new meter that actually works. So, that, that's already been a shock to the system of some people who were typically getting a bill for, for three thousand gallons and thus they assumed that their usage was three thousand gallons for two or three years and now they get a bill because they've got a new meter that has the records and proves that they were using sixty-five hundred. So, obviously, there's an impact on their bill. So, that's one concern is in, in this episode of people trying to get used to what the new meters are showing about their actual usage and it's a complex issue. We just wanna be careful what we proceed.
These, these new meters register a low flow situation much better than the old ones. So, that, that is where a lot of people will make the difference. Like, you know, water running for a long period of time, very slow, where the old meter may have only counted ten gallons, the new one may actually count the actual a hundred gallons that was used during that low flow situation.
Okay.
The, the new meters will be much more accurate to the flows that go through them than the old ones were. And that's just the, the evolution of the water meter and it's getting better as, as it goes, so.
But just trying to, to, to get to the kernel of that question, it's gonna take some poking and prodding and really looking at, at what we're seeing now that we're getting accurate readings, comparing it to decide whether people use less water, we charge the minimum for two months, what makes up that number? Because the billing errors could represent a third of that or half of it or two-thirds. Right now, we don't have any concrete information to determine that and we're just gonna have to watch the numbers and try to tease it out.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment, or a question. So, how many meters have we been billing just the minimum? Nineteen hundred? Is that what you just said?
We did for those two months, but it wasn't nineteen hundred then. I would say it was probably around eight hundred to a thousand at that time.
And so, how many of those usually use like me, minimum every, every month?
The majority of the people in town here are gonna be that minimum.
Okay. So, then when you go back and get the data, you would only have to get the ones that usually are using them, not, not all of them, correct?
Yeah, we would, I mean, there's a possibility that, that this one's normally the minimum and now, you know, one of those two months, they use extra filling up a swimming pool or something. But we could just go back and get those that historically are normally above the minimum.
I think, I think that our biggest concern is really the ones that's could've been like grossly using more, more water than just the minimum. Not just everybody, I mean, you know, that's what I think our concern is.
So, how about to, to keep the workload light on us as far as the meter situation goes, how about we give them, you know, they've had an, an actual usage bill for three months. Those that are historically over, why don't we just take the average of their three months now and compare that to what their minimum bill was for those two months? And then there's the difference between the minimum and what their average usage is for these three months now. And that keeps us from having to go to a lot of meters and pull data logs if that is, if we really wanna go after the revenue.
But I think my point is, is, um, so, of that three hundred thousand, that's gonna be more, more people like McDonald's or the high school, people like that versus so, so and so at a certain address.
We haven't been billing them, I guess, for a year.
McDonald's was a year and a half.
Yeah, okay, so, that's real. I think that's what we need to be focusing on.
But that wouldn't have showed up in last year's, that's what I'm saying, the revenue, it wouldn't have been there.
But he can't go back with the data, like you said earlier.
On those, those meters that were dead for that long, there's, they weren't recorded it, so there's no way to go get it, but.
All we can do is go forward and then you can make?
The number would've been the same last year because of the period that it wasn't working till this year, so now we'll be able to realize what their trend is or their average, at least in this part of the year.
Thank you, bro. I want to, yes, ma'am.
I was, no, it's okay, go ahead.
No, I'm just.
Okay.
I was just thinking.
I think that the, the only issue I foresee with that is how can you, like, there's too much gray area there. Who's, who's the high usage person and who's not? And how are you gonna draw that line? And how are you gonna say we're gonna go back and check these people's bills and bill them extra? I don't think you can do that.
Yeah, this is, you can have a seat.
I think that's our problem with businesses though, correct?
But if I'm?
It wouldn't be that hard for, to go back on just businesses versus?
Well, yeah, if you wanted to stipulate, it would be businesses only, but if you start looping in, I mean, I have a swimming pool, so I'm sure I was filling it in August and September, you know, and how do you?
I don't know where that?
First and foremost, we going back and forth about how would we do anything, first, let's get some direction. What does council want to do? And then we can start discussing that. We already had one point where it said we want to go back and, and charge for the, what was getting, what's the minimum that we will get, try to recruit some of that three hundred thousand dollars, right?
And I'm not asking for all of it, just some percent, some fair, some fair adjustment where they're paying at least part of what?
Right. Are there any debatable comments other than that?
Uh, are we done asking questions? Cause I had another question.
Well, we can, you can ask another one after we get to the direction we're going.
Okay. Well, it may have some bearing on that.
Okay, ask the question.
But, but, okay, so, is this a situation where we need to hire that third party to come out and look at all this information and try to figure out where there is a problem, where, where we can average out bills? Is that something we should consider so that we could get this done quicker instead of relying on Trey and his department to, or is this just, or do we just need more information that we're gonna have to wait on anyways?
Well, that, the third party has been very helpful, even though we bought the materials from them but did not opt to pay them for their services. They have been Johnny on the spot, Trey, coming in and saying, we're sorry that you're experiencing these issues. They've sent crews, they've audited the things. Now, the question of who paid what is not their wheelhouse. It's how do you get this radio to call from here and this is what these numbers mean? That would be more of an accounting issue which would involve our billing software. And again, it's based on data, some of which was falsified. It becomes difficult. And then you said you have a swimming pool and you filled it and you were sure you filled it, but do you have a new meter? Do you have an old meter? Was your meter new and configured properly or new and not? There's so many buckets to have to look into. And quite frankly, as, as an administrator who has some wonderful people who interface with our customers every day, I wanna make sure that whatever we come up with, and we'll do whatever council wishes, is reasonable to our customers, A, because that's the right thing to do. But these guys have been on the front lines and I just want you to weigh that in whatever your step forward is. Commercial accounts, it, it's difficult to tell, but obviously they're higher dollar accounts, so maybe that's a way to do it.
But only if they have the meters that are able to go back and check.
That was what I was saying, where instead of, we wouldn't be able to go back on those. We could just take their next three months of actual usage, take an average of that and go backwards would be the only way to do anything with those that were dead for a long period of time.
Like, we could do that with the schools and McDonald's, whatever it was that, these businesses that we get, and Tim could go out and just have a discussion, maybe we could recoup twenty-one percent or something, you know what I mean? But I, it would, something fair, you know what I mean, but the meter was not working.
The school situation, the schools only running water a lot during the school year, so I mean, you can't, I mean, you know what I'm saying? So, there's, maybe McDonald's is different, maybe their average would truly be an average that would be pretty consistently the same if that's, if, as an example of a business, if that was one that was one?
Did they irrigate with city water or did they have a well?
At the schools?
High school?
I'll have to look at their meters. I know McDonald's has a separate irrigation meter, not, not tied with a meter that we replaced in any way.
Which is fairly common to have an irrigation?
Yeah, most, most places have a meter for water usage in the building and a separate meter for irrigation.
But, and I believe, I believe that's the same with the school. I don't believe it's a well, I believe it's a separate meter.
I know Pickens High School has three meters.
Okay.
So, I would venture to say that one is for the building, one is for irrigation and one is for fire protection, but without going and pulling the numbers off of it and looking up the system, I can't for sure tell you which one is which off the top of my head.
So, what is the statute of limitation? I mean, how far back are you gonna go and try to recoup? I mean, is there, is there, I mean, not that there is, but should there be some kinda limit to how far back you're gonna try to grab?
I'm always thinking this, since we reinstalled these, except for the businesses that they weren't working at all, I think that's a different negotiation.
Those are a few.
I believe that the best answer to your question is that as far as I know, this is unprecedented, so. So our discernment has to be our guide, what is reasonable.
Yeah, sweet.
It's, it's a tricky position to be in because nobody wants to shake their head at three hundred thousand dollars. And I wanna confirm that we are all under the impression that that number is not continually growing from here forward, right? We have, we have resolved this. Now, three hundred and thirty four thousand dollars left in the budget. What was budgeted for new meters? I know it's easy to say, well, we can just use that three hundred thousand to cover the cost and we're not buying any more meters. But that doesn't solve the issue of why we budgeted that for those meters in the first place. Because this is recurring revenue for our city that we need to put those new meters in to ensure that we're gonna be gaining that revenue. So I don't really, I don't really like the, let's take the three hundred thousand that we budgeted for the new meters and use it to cover the cost.
Mr. Mayor, just, and Councilwoman, that's not the calculus. And it's not that far different. But it is not taking the budgeted expenditure and using it to make up any lost revenue. Which again, we still don't know that three hundred thousand dollars is lost.
Okay, so I was misunderstanding then, cause I, the way that it was explained, I thought that that was what was being presented.
It was a, we're three hundred thousand dollars beyond, below trend.
Right.
Which doesn't mean that it's necessarily a loss. It is going down because the revenues are going up because we're fixing situations like this as well. But it wasn't, let's take this money and pay the difference. It was, if we're down in revenues, let's not spend in this budget year that money. So we would move that money forward into the next budget year. So we wouldn't, we would wash it out, but we wouldn't use one to pay the other.
Okay, no, thank you for clarifying. I don't know that I necessarily agree yet, though.
So is that mean that we won't be putting any more meters until next year?
That's what's being presented.
So that means that, what you just said, that we wouldn't be replacing the meters that we've been having revenue issues with them?
Exactly.
We are, we are replacing the, the spots, especially with these commercial meters. But yes, that is a question for council. If council wants to continue forthwith, you know, obviously, the warranty period on the old meters is going away. How much longer are they under warranty?
What basis?
The old ones.
No, the registers, are they out?
Yeah, they're out.
Okay.
They're currently coming out.
So that is another question for council direction is what has been presented? Is that we have held spending any more dollars on that program until the next budget year? And that has kind of been the balancing of the scales. If council does have a different position or wishes to proceed, you know, obviously, we, we don't have the bandwidth in-house to deal with the issues we're dealing with and resume the installation. So we would have to bring somebody else in, which would be another budget question. Which is difficult to deal with within the current budget year.
So that three hundred and thirty four thousand, that's what it is, is that right? What's left? Yeah, so that is budgeted to meters, correct?
New, new replacement.
Could you use that, some of that money to bring those people in to, to install the other meters?
Like half an installation, half meters, you'd have, you wouldn't be able to get all the registers.
Yeah, but.
You'd need more money to pay to have it done.
Well, how many registers do we have?
We could get them come in there and finish with the problems we got right now, though.
We have about three hundred and thirty.
That's a lot. And that's already been paid for, correct?
We can analyze that and get back to you and say, if we did that, this is how much we would pay for installation. This is how much, how many more meters we could do. I mean, I'm all for continuing the pays.
Well, if you're gonna have that for this budget and you can bring them in and get this straightened out now, then you can go ahead and budget for next year anyway, right? So you can do that anywhere.
And this was a multi-year process, so that's essentially how it would work.
I mean, personally, it sounds to me like we really need to get the, nothing against Trey. I know they're doing hard, like, I mean, they're, they're kind of out of their.
We gotta get these old ones out.
Right, yeah, that's, seems like that would be the, and then going back to the, the lost revenue. I understand it's hard to, that it's very hard to, to go back and charge or figure out what we're gonna charge somebody. But I would like to make an effort or some, some solution of some kind to see what we can recoup. A reasonable, a reasonable.
What about a contingency fee basis of it? We hire a, a firm on a contingency fee, like, we think there's like three hundred thousand. We'd like you to take this project on and we'll give you X amount of, of the recovery. I mean, there's a.
Well, it's not lost revenue, he says it's a trend. Out of that trend, it, how much is our water usage? Is the water usage going up and the trend of, of payment going down? Or you have to, if we didn't use the water, you're not gonna get that revenue.
I understand, so that would be.
So where's the water usage, where's the trend on the water usage?
And I don't have the answer to that question, I don't know if Trey does.
What if for those months? You'd have to obviously lose some of it for leaks and different things that happen. But what about for those two months that we build the minimums? Let's see what our usage was on our master meter from Greenvale and what we build out for and see what the difference is.
Right. Cause if you didn't use the water, you, we didn't lose any money.
Exactly.
The trend is just down.
We know what we build out and what we pay to get it.
Right, and, and I think that's a good question that we've stumbled across and need to have an answer to. So if you could get that data, that would be interesting to see if, is the water usage up and the revenues down? Or is the usage down and the revenue down?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just as a comment to that, if I had a new meter put in and I suddenly realized that I was using a lot more water than I thought I was for years, I probably would make a change in how much water I was using. So the trend of less, the trend may be real in that people are using less water because they realized I was using more than I thought I was. Because I'd always gotten a minimum bill or whatever, right? Just saying, that's a possibility, so.
So that's why, you know, it's not a compound, it's a very complex equation to figure out and that's a good variable.
I mean, we could, we'd get that information from Greenvale Water and then we can look at, you know, how much money came, came through the lines in those two months? And then we can look at, when we, I guess last year, we were, we were manufacturing, I mean, selling our own water. Right? So that we could measure those two and see, you know, I mean, if they were.
Look at that trend, you have to see what that trend is and then look at your in, your, your income trend. You know, are they both down or one up and down and level them out?
This is very healthy discussion and I, I really appreciate everybody's input. But let's get a clear avenue in which we want to travel. We definitely want to try to make sure that we can get a better handle on our water usage. That's gonna be better for us all the way around, that we know what the city is using. Because we now are accustomed to Greenvale Water and we want to be able to know. And we can stay on top of that as a council and that's a good thing. What I'm getting from the discussion that I've been sitting here listening is a lot of things that we need answers to, we don't know. And therefore, it's going to be hard at this point to recruit any money from customers until we come down, come up with a plan. Something concrete that we have to, to show them where we're at. So I, I suggest that we put our heads together and see which avenue we want to go with. Getting another firm to come and take it over or that Trey continue with his crew.
Mr. Mayor, let me, how many, Trey, how many meters do we need to keep on hand just for those other routes that we're not doing? That might need to have a meter switched out?
At least forty to fifty.
Okay, and you've got three hundred and thirty?
I have two pallets of three hundred and thirty meters. So I have six hundred and fifty, six hundred and sixty registers sitting in the shop.
And you need to have a reserve of maybe fifty meters probably?
Yeah, but out of those six hundred and sixty, I got about six hundred to finish changing out route seven and eight. See what I'm saying?
So you've got two pallets of meters that you've already spoken for.
They already have a place to go.
They have a place to go.
We just haven't put them there.
We just haven't put them in, okay, okay, so they're not waiting there to decide. But you still need to have some meters set aside for those other routes that might need a meter switched out.
In one through eight, yes. If it's in routes nine through sixteen, instead of putting a new one, because when we read nine through sixteen, we don't use the radio to read the new meters because they're all old.
Okay.
So if it's nine through sixteen and we find one that won't data log or it doesn't transmit to read, I also have new old style registers that we are doing in nine through sixteen that we've always kept.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does, yeah, that was information I didn't understand.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just have one. So I think Trey gave us, he gave us an option of what to do a little while ago, so that's something to.
Consider.
Consider, yes.
You talking about, um, getting three and then having an average from it?
I mean, that's a start and that's something to consider, yeah, yeah, so I just want, yeah.
But do we have enough answers to make a concrete decision right now as far as where we're going? I think we need to get, I think the task needs to be at hand with our administrator and our department head to come up with the data that we need for our la, your last meeting in December. But we need to talk about this in December if we don't have an answer right now. And I just don't have enough information to put it on our customers at this time for the mistakes that have been made. I just, if we do have enough information, I'm all for it. But if we don't have enough data, I don't wanna make that type of decision and put it on the backs of the people. Yes, ma'am.
I don't have enough information to put it back on the customers yet, not that decision. But as far as the continuing to replace meters, I think we need to, I feel like we should be making a decision about that.
Good point.
We'll bring some data back on the costs involved and, and how we could move forward that program. To put this in context, I don't know if it's math that makes any difference, but math always makes a difference. Over the, our total customer base, both commercial and residential, this is about a sixty dollar per customer account issue at this point. So that's just a number to keep out there as a separate data point.
But, sorry, back to my question, why, why can't we make a decision on continuing to replace meters that we already have on site?
You may.
Pardon?
You may, but we, it would be prudent for us to go through the budget considerations, get the quotes. Because if we're looking at.
Quotes from what, though?
If we were to hire the company to come in and do this, instead of our internal staff, which is still working on correcting the other issues. I mean.
Off the top of your head.
This isn't fixed yet.
And you made a decision.
I thought that's what I asked earlier.
It's not fixed.
Oh, just second, um, about, we were gonna do it in-house DIY, right? What made us make that decision? What was the cost difference?
Three hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred thousand dollars comes up a lot.
I wanted to be voice so it could be on record.
An installer is not gonna, they're not gonna waste their time to come put in six hundred meters. Like, we, we may have a hard time finding an installer that wants to come in here just for six hundred registers. They'll, they'll be wanting to come in and change, they would have wanted to start it and change all forty five hundred. So, I mean, I know they're out there and we could probably find one, but it may take us a little bit to find an installer that.
So, so that's a problem.
One local.
That would be a problem now, or next year, no matter when we do it, right?
We would have a better chance of getting them to come do all nine through sixteen, cause that's about twenty five hundred or twenty two to twenty five hundred. So I think we could find someone for those, I do. But I think it may be somewhat tough to find someone that only wants to come here for six hundred meters, just.
And so if I'm understanding correctly, we can't internally start replacing more? I'm not saying six hundred next month, but we can't continue to try to replace because we are still so tied up with trying to figure out the mess?
Correct. I mean, we have got, we're on the downhill side of the mess now. It's not that it's a lot of unknowns, it's just time consuming to go to each meter location that we're having trouble with and check. You know, the EIDs are correct, check the lid, check, you know, check all the things that we have been troubleshooting the meters with. It's, I mean, we have, including me, we have five people on the utility side and we're short one right now. So it's hard to still fix leaks, make stops, troubleshoot meters and change them out all at the same time.
Now, we are on the downhill side and I think that there is a time in the near future, probably mid or the end of December, when that's all gonna be hammered out with what we've gotten around. And we can resume installing the six hundred registers that we have. And then kind of the thought process has been with the larger group, the twenty five hundred remaining. That would line up with the July one timeframe anyway, based on moving forward. So I, I think they will be in a position to very capably, with the new knowledge, resume with what they've got on hand. And then we look at what we need to do with the, is it nine through?
Nine through sixteen.
Nine through sixteen, twenty five hundred meters to look at that in the next budget year.
I highly suggest that we start looking at that before the summer season ends again.
Yes, definitely.
So we, I'm, I'm getting confused right here.
We're talking about several different things.
Well, no, but so, when we bought these meters and we decided that we were gonna put them all in ourselves? Was that all the routes, everything?
Yes.
Correct. So now we're stopping in the middle, we got twenty five hundred left and with six hundred two, there's about two that he's already got installed that you gotta work on.
So thirty one hundred.
Yeah, so.
Our total meter count.
So why did we have to separate it from the six hundred from the twenty five hundred?
The twenty five hundred was for the next, next.
So that's from, that's our not budgeted yet?
Yes.
That, that's budgeted for future, it was a multi-phase project.
So, so we haven't budgeted that?
No, that's something that.
We've only budgeted the first.
And, and the assumption was that we would spend a similar amount, similar amount in year two that we did year one. But we knew we were gonna have to evaluate that in the upcoming.
So what Trey's saying now is, cause we haven't budgeted that, that they can't, they will not come for six hundred meters left until we budget again. Till we get the new twenty five hundred.
I just think we would have a hard time finding somebody to travel all the way up here just to change out six hundred.
And it's even more complex than that because as soon as we get everything hammered out, which we're close to, they can resume putting the meters in the, in the ground that they've got or the registers. They now know the configuration issues, they now know the placement issues that are considerations. So they're perfectly capable of doing that. But if, then if you do a mass installation with twenty five hundred, what we're suggesting is maybe we just look to budget to get that taken care of externally for the next year.
I would, I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to hear Trey and Tim both say, I, I'm at a ninety five percent confidence level that we can do this installation ourselves, we figured this out and we know we can do this now, it's time to start again. I don't think they're there, and I think.
I will give you a one hundred percent statement of exactly where I am with that. I think that the folks that we have, and we've done some addition through subtraction, that caused some big problems. With staffing, but we've taken care of that now. I am perfectly confident that they are absolutely technically capable at this point, because they've learned a lot. Through trial and error, with help from the vendors. If they had all the time in the world to concentrate on it, then they could.
They could do it.
Do it capably. I have come to be cautious about them biting off more than this community can chew. And we've stubbed our toe.
We don't have the manpower to do it then.
And when you stub your toe, you, that toe finds the table leg over and over again. We need to find a way to wrap that table leg so we don't stub our toe again.
That would be part of the ninety five percent that I'm looking for. And you're saying we just don't have the manpower to handle this, so we can't do it.
I, I, I think that we overestimated our capacity to take on more. Because remember, at the same time that we did this, we basically in-sourced a lot of things about our water system or everything about our water system because we had a contract with an outside vendor that had lots of outside support. And it's been so long, you can't even, CWS, couldn't remember the initials. But we took all that in-house, we took the maintenance of our. we took the maintenance of our distribution system, the dis, the maintenance of our sewer and our storm sewer. We have layered and layered, and then the county dropped out of stormwater reviews-
Yeah.
-they're having to do that. So in all fairness, if you look at trend lines, three hundred thousand dollars is one trend, if you look at the responsibilities-
Yeah.
-that the utility and the public works department had a year ago-
Right.
-that line has gone way up and not down.
I agree.
So they're, they're supporting codes compliance now, they're doing stormwater reviews, uh, they're doing stormwater, uh, uh, training and they're doing the inspections. Um, they're handling all of our distribution system, uh, they're handling all of the, the wastewater pump stations and all of the maintenance, and I'm sure you could add to the list, but, uh, those were all things that, um, were done by a contractor and I've been very proud at, uh, how they have handled the new layered responsibilities. But this is a symptom of, as somebody who is a manager, you have to go, I pushed just a little bit too far. And I think I just have to, to take the, the heat on that one and say, they're great people, I have a lot of confidence in them, but I asked them to do too much.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh-
Yes, sir.
I think we're getting a little bit off the subject here. So I'm gonna read here the number, number eight, further discussion as it relates to the loss of revenue with new meter change. I don't think we talked a lot about loss of revenue, we-
We talked about the three hundred, uh, what, the change rate?
I mean, so, I mean, I think we're getting off, yeah, I mean, we need, I thought we were supposed to be talking about loss of revenue.
Yeah.
And it seems like we've been getting off on some, I don't know, what other, other stuff, so it's-
I think all this is, you know, the same subject, you know what I mean? We're trying to figure out whether we should, whether we should install anymore.
But we haven't talked about the loss of revenue that much.
Right, right.
We have, we've balanced all around it, but we haven't talked about the loss of revenue.
Right, and what we should do about it, and we posed a lot of questions, I think-
And Trey gave us, he gave us a suggestion.
Right.
And I appreciated that.
Yeah, I do too.
And, I mean, you know-
You have a lot of questions now, much data and, I mean, I think posing the questions is, is, I think, the hardest part, trying to figure out what are the issues, you know what I mean, that we need to address? I mean, have, have we beat this horse to death where you think you could come back with the council, you know, even if we have to have a special meeting, I don't care, you know what I mean, where we, where you could come out with some more data for us so that we can make a decision on this?
I, I think we have clear guidance, as you stated, on a number of different topics, um, that we can list and we'll work with Donna to make sure that we're, uh, keeping that list, because it is, these, these are multiple questions that we need to address. Um, and the revenue question is the, the one on the agenda and the primary one. Um, and I, I think that comparing the, the usage and the financial trends, uh, putting that into the blender and seeing what it concocts, um, and getting that information back. We may very well be in a position where, uh, we need to have a brief or more in-depth meeting once we generate some of that information.
Okay.
Okay.
We're at a point now that all of us have talked about this, this is our second time talking about it. It's just so many variables in it that we have to add in there even to talk about the loss of revenue. What's causing this? Which way can we go to, to stop the bleeding? And also to make sure that we somewhat can recruit, if, if, if possible, any income that's been lost. When we started this discussion, I was trying to get a direction, but I'm the type of mayor that tries to give everybody an opportunity to speak. It might be off-base, it might be something else that, that you might not think is part of the discussion, but I want you all to have the freedom to discuss. Uh, that being said, I tried to get us on track.
I think we had a very good discussion, and I, and I think we, I think we have, and I, and I appreciate everybody talking about it.
Thank you.
And I appreciate everybody's opinion.
Yeah, but, um-
And I appreciate Trey coming here-
Yes, sir.
Keeping us up to date.
And I appreciate Trey, that young man has really stepped up and has done a great job-
Yeah.
Uh, as, at, at your position.
Isn't that crucial?
I think, I think he, I think he needs some help. Um, I think it's gonna be, right now, I, with all the responsibilities that we have with our public works and water, it's gonna be some more departments put in there that I see in the future, and administrative, and to have some people really helping that out to where we can move in a more strategic way. Uh, that's in the future and I, I'm just glad that we're able to have this healthy discussion. It may not be what normal councils do, but I think our little town of Pickens should have this opportunity to discuss whatever's on your heart and mind so that we can get a leeway. I would like to have, if I could ask, a cheat sheet. I mean, I don't want twenty pages, I want bottom-line numbers. I want to know how much we've spent to this date on our water from Greenville Water. I want to know exactly how much, um, we've spent to get these meters in, that what we have in place, the nu, uh, actual total number that's already been installed, what needs to be installed, what is the plan for the different phases on one piece of paper? Then everybody can look at that and we can make a good decision on, on, on the da, on that data.
Yep.
I think sometimes we start talking about this stuff and it gets so confusing because there's so many variables, so many things that you, you think about, while you're thinking about getting this money situation straight. That being said, let's just get with Mandy, get with Tim and also Trey, and then we get one sheet together, we'll have a special call meeting. Said it's just gonna be one meeting in November, but if y'all want to have it on Thanksgiving, I'm fine with it. But it, but let's get together again this month, because I don't want to leave this in the hands of a new council. That, no, no kind of direction is being put forward. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna get the data, you've been charged. Let us know exactly, the, the exact numbers of what, what we're dealing with.
The months that we charge flat fees, how much water we usage, you know what I mean? Yeah, all, you know, you know the questions, I think.
That, that direction I feel is, is very clear.
Yeah.
And Donna will help us remember it.
Okay.
If not, you can go back and watch it.
Yes.
Yeah, go back and watch. All right, thank y'all so much. Now, we need to convene into executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, section thirty dash four dash seventy, A1, Appointment of the Board of Architectural Review. Can I have a motion that we move?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we convene into executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, uh, to the Architectural Board of Review.
And I second it.
It's been promptly moved in second, any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand, it's unanimous, excuse us, and we'll be right back as soon as possible. All right, what action are we to take in relation to the executive session? Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor-
Go ahead, you do it.
Okay, there, there, before the board, before the, I'm sorry, before the council here is the question. We need to, um, appoint, uh, two individuals to serve on the Board of Architecture Review as there are currently two vacancies. Um, the, uh, the, the council has been presented with a list of those who would be interested in serving on this board, and, um, I would move that we, um, of those, of those three, two, only two can serve, my motion is that we accept that, uh, David, we appoint David Michael and Jonathan Holder to the Board of Architecture Review.
Second.
It's been promptly moved to second, are any questions, comments? All in favor, raise your right hand, it's unanimous. Congratulations, all right. Now, comments from council?
Mr. Mayor-
Yes?
Um, I would like to, I was, I wanted to find the date for, just highlight some of the upcoming festivities in the town really quickly.
I love that.
Um, just as a reminder, the Pickens, uh, Christmas will be Friday, the twenty-eighth. The tree lighting, the market starts at four-thirty, the tree lighting starts at five-thirty, that is over at the Doodle Pavilion, it's a beautiful, beautiful event, it's the day after Thanksgiving. Um, so, everyone that can be there, please do plan to be there. The Pickens Christmas Parade is December the fifth at seven PM. Um, we are very excited for this year's Christmas parade as usual, and if anyone is interested in volunteering for the Christmas parade, please do, um, reach out to City Hall, I'm sure they will find out who to put you in touch with. And there's also Shop With A Cop, and I apologize, I do not have the date for Shop With A Cop right now, but I know that there are a lot of opportunities to donate, volunteer and help in any sort of way with that event. It is fabulous to be there and see those kids shopping with our police officers and our other first responders. So, lots of holiday joy coming up, just want everyone to mark their calendars.
Thank you, that was so good.
So, is Tim gonna send that up to us, or? I didn't write any of that down, is it?
Oh, no, I'm not passing the money. I want everybody to see, I did not pass that dollar. Y'all take care of it. All right?
So, I mean, you, that'll come out on the calendar, I guess in the city calendar, okay.
Any other comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, um, I don't know if this is my last meeting or not on this council, um, but, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read a statement concerning my, my, the wrapping up of my time on this council and, and whether it be this, tonight or, or another meeting, uh, later this month.
I'm sorry.
Mostly because I, I know that Councilman Rogers needs to take a nap before he goes home so he can stay awake on the long bicycle ride. Um, but let me just say, after tonight and during the next few weeks, I begin the adjustment back to life as it was for me before I was elected to this body one year ago. During this past year, I have had the privilege of working with this council and our dedicated staff. Jointly, we discussed, debated, and decided. We bestowed honors and recognition on organizations and individuals that rightly deserve to be recognized for their efforts in helping Pickens help itself. While I will miss being here, I understand and appreciate that sometimes things change. Some changes must happen and at other times, changes just happen. I encourage the next council to continue fighting for Pickens and working for the greater good. And what I mean by that is that I hope you will do everything in your power without being irresponsible to help the people and businesses that are working to bring peace and prosperity to Pickens, helping them to thrive and flourish. In other words, please get out of their way and let Honest Enterprise do what it does best. Meet needs, provide services, help their fellow man, and where appropriate and possible, make a healthy profit. I am proud of the things that this council has worked toward this past year, and while we were not always in agreement, I am proud that we conducted our business with civility and respect. And even Councilman Rogers let me say what I needed to say, for the most part. I voted for our agreement with Greenville Water, ensuring our water needs for years to come. I voted to adopt a new employee compensation policy that will help stabilize our staffing needs and improve the lives of our city employees. I voted to create an incentive program to help our property owners preserve our heritage buildings and architecture. I voted to add the planned development district to our zoning ordinance. I voted for the annexation of the property on Wolf Creek School Road and the associated development agreement. Each of these votes has resulted in something new, a change of direction, a new mindset, a change that I believe will pay dividends for Pickens. In closing, I say to each of you, thank you for putting up with me, overlooking my quirks, my humor, my comments, and my sometimes endless questions. May God bless your continued work and may God bless all that is Pickens, thank you.
Thank you. Let's get it, man. All right. I have something to present to you.
Okay.
I'm coming that way.
I'll stand up so you can get by, because I don't have a roller thing over here on the-
All right. This plaque, I'd like to present to you, it says, "An appreciation to John McManus for your dedication to service Pickens City Council, 2024-2025, for the City of Pickens." Thank you.
John wanted to be in that picture, didn't you, and you want me in it?
I, yeah, later.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you, we really appreciate you.
I'll, I'll, I'll put that up here in, next to the, let me just go ahead and put the other one in here that Mr., our Councilman Rogers has, has provided for me. I'm just gonna let you see it, all right? I can take a joke, right?
I'm gonna miss this moment. Yes, but thank you again, you've done a great job-
Yeah.
-for the City of Pickens. Any other comments?
I think you, it's, it's been wonderful working with you.
Uh, I don't have any comments.
Okay.
I don't think it's appropriate time.
It's been a, been a-
I don't want to take it away from the moment.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so, I'll do that later.
It's been a joy working with you.
Other than that, I do appreciate Mr. McManus.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And I, I enjoyed working with you and getting to know you, and, and it's been a blessing to have you as part of council and it's been, you added a lot of value to council and to all of our lives. And I'm really sorry that you not, won't be coming back this next two years, that hopefully you'll be back again.
Yeah, well, hopefully I can say the same about you at some point.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's awesome.
Now, you just dropped my phone number out of your phone.
It's already, it just comes up with spam now, is it?
Spam, okay, I'll just block yours tonight.
Now we're ready for our, our last motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second it.
It's been promptly moved to second, all in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned, thank you so much for your time.